All right. It is 6 o'clock. I called the meeting to order of the June 1, 2022 Planning Board meeting. My name is Stephanie Slisch. I am the Chair of the Planning Board. To my right, I have Jimmy Tar, who is alternate Chair. I have Bob Wagner to my left, and our newest Board member, David Bell, who was just elected and sworn in the past month, so welcome.
Thank you.
I have Administrative Assistant Gerard Bueno also here as well with us. The first part of the agenda is public forum. This is an opportunity for folks to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight. I do have one part of a letter from someone that I will read, unless anyone else would like to come and speak at public forum now, not related to the item that's on the current agenda. All right. So Eric Van Gill couldn't be here tonight. I'm from Cronin Hill Road, but he wrote a pretty lengthy letter to the Board for us to consider in regards to this project. Although, a lot of it is about the applicant and about this particular application, I am going to read the part that I think is not relevant necessarily to this applicant, but would be appropriate for public forum, so I'm going to read that part now. "I would like to ask the Planning Board to initiate the process of drafting a new town bylaws and/or remove the existing bylaws regarding outdoor cultivation as to completely prohibit the outdoor cultivation of marijuana, including the cultivation of it in greenhouses, hoop houses, and the like, while at the same time drafting new bylaws to only allow indoor cultivation. By doing so, it will ensure that the town of Hatfield maintains its rural character, aesthetic appeal, natural environment, and historical features, and none of its residents would have to worry about a pot farm ruining their neighborhood. Pittsfield, Mass. voted to ban outdoor cultivation in February 2021, so there should be no reason the town of Hatfield wouldn't be able to do the same. It is also a fact that indoor grow facilities do not require a perimeter fence, have 100% control over odor mitigation, and blend in with their industrial and/or commercially zoned surroundings. If the Planning Board is not willing or unable to entertain this suggestion, I would alternatively ask the Planning Board to amend bylaw 7B.5.E. to read: 'I in the rural residential, outlying residential town center or business districts within 6,000 feet of any pre-existing residential use, instead of the current 500 feet,' and quote, 'in the agricultural district within 3,000 feet of such a use,' end quote, 'instead of the current 300 feet.'" I also need to point out that the original North Hatfield road -- this now gets into a little bit of the application. "I hereby would at the same time offer my help and input in the Planning Board in discussing, drafting, and amending the current and future bylaws pertaining to the cultivation of marijuana." And a lot of this, too, I'm not reading because I don't want to -- it's just the process so that we can maintain fairness through the whole process. And a lot of the stuff that Eric brought up was things that he mentioned and other folks mentioned at our last meeting. So I just wanted to say that basically it was asking the Board to amend our bylaws and work to amend our bylaws, which now, not speaking to what was written, or speaking to what was written, but not -- this is not what Eric wrote. But yeah, that is something that folks can come to the Planning Board with, and we can work on bringing something to town meeting. That's the only way we can change bylaws, is bringing them to town meeting and voting on them. It's not up to us to change -- it's not like this four of us or five of us that can change those bylaws. So we are voting and operating within the bylaws that we currently have. But yeah, if there's enough citizen interest in working with myself as Chair or whoever the next Chair is, we're voting to reorganize today. I'm working on bringing something to town meeting, totally open to that, because that's the whole point of town meeting, is to vote on these types of things and not really be made in the decisions of five people with something like town bylaws, so.
And it should be pointed out that the town only just, in the last two weeks, has embarked on swearing in members to a master planning committee to relook at our master plan, which would then result, in all likelihood, with modifications to our existing zoning bylaw to reflect the new language and the new thoughts and vision in that master plan. And so that process is about to begin.
But there is no guarantee that that master plan is going to change the bylaws in the direction that Eric Van Gill would like them to happen.
Correct, yeah. Anybody else would like to speak to public forum, to anything that's not on the agenda for tonight? And we appreciate Eric's letters, referencing our bylaws and making arguments that way, which is--
It was done eloquently.
It was done, yes. With that, I'll make a motion to close public forum, or disclose public forum. I always have the habit of saying make a motion. The next piece, before we reopen the public hearing, I wanted to take an opportunity. So David Bell is our new Planning Board member, and he obviously was not at the last meeting, but there is a section of general laws of Massachusetts that allows a member to, even though they weren't at the previous part of the hearing, if they say that they've watched all the meetings, read all the materials previous, they are able to vote on this. So we're having him sign that memorandum.
If you'd like me to read it, I could. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
"In accordance with Chapter 39, Section 23D of General Law of Massachusetts, a member shall not be disqualified from voting solely due to a member's absence from no more than a single session of a hearing if said member has examined all evidence received at the missed session. This writing is to certify that I, David L. Bell Jr., have missed a single session. This writing is to certify that I, David Bell Jr., have missed a single session, have examined all evidence received, and viewed the video recording of the above referenced hearing held on May 4, 2022, and therefore not disqualified from voting. This memorandum signed below shall be included as part of the record." May I just add to that? I have reviewed all of the material involved, and I've actually reached out to quite a few people who spoke up about it, and if I didn't get a chance to reach everybody, I'm sorry about that. So I am pretty well-versed in what's going on here.
Okay. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to open the public hearing again? Do we have to motion that? Yes?
No.
Great. All right. So where we last left off at our last meeting in May, we asked the applicant to come back with some more information specifically around water flow and what their plans were for water and runoff. We also asked them to follow up with the neighbors about tiling of the field or how water flow of the field might impact some of the neighbors, especially the farm next door. We also asked them to talk to the police department and have someone in the police come to us, or coming with a letter or be here in person. We received a letter, and I'll read that in a moment. And we also, on our end, were doing a little research on housing and property values, that was a question, and then also reached out to our town attorney around the concern Mike Bartlett brought up about Article 7B.5K related to visibility in fences and buildings and things. So those are the things that I'm recapping what happened. So now we have this whole month for the applicant to come forth with some of that information, present their information, and then we can talk about the information that we found, and then go from there. So would you like to introduce yourself and come to the microphone and--
What do you want to hit first? I wanted to know in order that-- Sure. Great. I'm Chris Chamberlain, a civil engineering and construction group on behalf of the applicant. And I'm going to talk a little bit about water use and destination on the site. Earlier today, it looks like you've got copies of a letter that I put together, just sort of summarizing some of this information. And so at a basic level, the proposal is to, through a combination of plastic mulch on the rows, drip irrigation with a controlled fertigation system located in the headhouse on the property, and moisture monitoring of the soil to really spoon-feed water and nutrients to the grow operation, only to the extent that that water is needed in order to reduce demand. And through that process, we anticipate that, you know, certainly surface runoff from irrigation is going to be nonexistent, because the water is going to be dripped right at the root level. There's a constant monitoring system for soil moisture to really only send that water when the plants need it and to right-size it. And that combined with the mulching of the fields with the sort of black plastic mulch will limit the amount that we can lose by evaporation. And, you know, all in all, it makes for a very water-efficient system, especially as compared to a traditional irrigation system. The water supply is going to be supplied with what we anticipate to be three well points on-site. Bernie's walked the site with a well driller, and the anticipation is that those well points put together will produce a yield of about 60 gallons per minute. And so based on experience, both sort of industry standards, but also direct experience with the River Valley Growers site in town and the site in Whately at Seven River Road, where there's actually been growing recent data, the estimate is that on the peak day, meaning mature plants, midsummer, in drought conditions, that the maximum day would use about 18,000 gallons of water. And so certainly, over the course of a growing season, with rainfall contributing to this outdoor grow operation, and that management system that I mentioned, and, you know, plants coming to maturity, the daily average over a period of time will be significantly less than that, but we really target that high end. And just for perspective, so this will be a private well. The population of the site is not enough to require any kind of public water supply for drinking water. And so there'll be a local well permit through the Board of Health to drill those well points, which is primarily concerned with setbacks to other uses. Given the size of the site, there's really no concern there. And in terms of sort of water quantity, the state does have a threshold where they start to scrutinize at the DEP level larger water withdrawals. And that threshold gets crossed at an average of 100,000 gallons per day over a 90-day period. So 9 million gallons of water over a 90-day period is where the state starts to create registration and monitoring and permitting process for private well. And obviously, our average use is going to be significantly less than that. And then just sort of looking at the stormwater side, you know, the proposal for this project is really minimized in terms of changes to the land. We're going to have those three greenhouse structures, a couple other small facilities, and we're going to convert a little portion of the field to gravel. And sort of, I alluded to this last time, but when you start with ag operation, you know, row crops, sort of heavy-use ag, and then convert what is a very small portion of the site into impervious area, we're essentially within the rounding error of stormwater modeling. So from an engineering perspective, there isn't that -- the work that we're doing doesn't actually change the runoff from the site. But that said, you know, we're obviously well-aware of the series of drainage ditches that run through this site, that flow off-site, that run through neighboring farms. Bernie's been in touch, in conversation with the Butter to the North, who's sort of intimately tied in with the drainage on this site. They certainly have some on-the-ground knowledge of how these things work. And, you know, the commitment is to keep those ditches operating, you know, the same way that they were built many decades ago, you know, to the maximum extent that the regulations allow. I cited this in the letter, but under, you know, recent permitting through the Conservation Commission on these sites, as well as other towns in the state, it's pretty clear, in my opinion, but sort of backed up by those findings, that any work on those ditches would be falling under an exemption from the Wetlands Protection Act. And that's, you know, quoted directly in that letter that I gave you, but, you know, it essentially allows any kind of routine maintenance that maintains the flow of water through the site specifically for the purposes of optimizing growing conditions. It includes clearing, grading, repairing, dredging, restoring, man-made and natural water management systems, and it lists a whole bunch of reservoirs, farm ponds, irrigation systems, field dishes, cross dishes. So we're on solid ground that, you know, continuing to grow on this site, that those activities will be allowed, and it's vital, both to the viability of this site in terms of keeping those fields in good condition, and the neighbors, that we continue to maintain that. So that's the intention, is to prevent blockages in those ditches and to ensure that things, you know, continue to kind of operate the way they have recently. And then to touch on the question, you know, it came up, drain tiling. There was, at one point, a consideration of particularly this wet area of active fields here, which is pretty well-saturated as compared to other portions of the site, potentially tiling that to improve drainage. However, that, at this point, is off the table. Bernie can talk a little bit about the process that came to that. So that is not proposed, although I think there is still potential interest with the neighbor of exploring it in the future. But that would only be done to the extent allowed under any exemptions to Wetlands Protection. And then, you know, even looking ahead to that time period, you know, the question was brought up, how does that affect runoff on the site? And when we look at engineering stormwater on sites, it is the big deluge that occurs during the heavy, heavy rainstorms that we design around. We essentially ignore things like footing drains around buildings and sort of those low, constant trickles of water that remove, that we call base flow. On the one hand, there is a typically negligible, perhaps slightly more than negligible, increase to the base flow of these drainage systems when you drain that sort of groundwater off. On the other hand, you're also regenerating the area that you're draining water away from and creating more room in the soil for some of that to be absorbed when the rains do come. So overall, that really does, you know, whether that happens in the future or not, negligible impact to any functions within the site. And so I am only here to talk about water in terms of those topics that we brought up, but I think some of the other team members can address some of those other questions.
Okay. Do we want to ask questions after each topic, or wait till we get through all the information and then ask questions?
I have--
Yeah.
Just a, just, can you give me how you got your data on the 18,000 gallons? Just so everyone's clear on that.
Sure. You want to--
Just by history with RBG and Seven River Road, working with the irrigation company, they'll tell us how many gallons we're putting out per point. And at River Valley Growers, we have four points there. At Straits Road LLC, there's only going to be three, because there's this larger amount of available water, according to--
That's the assumption.
That's the assumption.
And can you introduce yourself, just for the record?
Bernie Smorowski.
I guess the only other pertinent point he had was, is there anyone here from the property to the north, Go Farm? Anyone here that represents them at all? Just, no?
They were here last time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify and make sure that this wasn't a one-sided conversation on their agreement to work on the ditches. That's all. That's all.
Anything else related to the water? And also, we have time to ask more questions later, too. Me, too. All right. The next piece that I mentioned was the police and security question. I had a letter from the police chief dated May 27 come to the Planning Board. I will read it. I don't know how to pronounce his last name. I always butcher it, so I apologize.
Sir.
From that police chief. "Subject: Recrime Statistics As It Pertains to Marijuana Facilities in Hatfield. Dear Board, this letter is in reference to the continuing operations and proposed operations of marijuana facilities in the town of Hatfield. As of this date, the Hatfield Police Department has seen no calls for services related to these facilities. The Hatfield Police Department has not noted any adverse conditions stemming from those licensed to operate any such facility, such as increases in suspicious activity, traffic, thefts, or crime in general. Though I cannot specifically speak to marijuana facilities in Massachusetts bringing increases in crime to their host communities, I have not heard of any major issues from other departments. Respectfully submitted, Chief Michael Docheck."
And Isaac does have some information to share on that topic.
Okay.
Hi. My name is Isaac Fleischer. I'm legal counsel for the applicant. And I had, I think I had the easiest job here. I was tasked with researching crime specifically at marijuana establishments in the state of Massachusetts. So break-ins, essentially. And I think the Planning Board's request was we look at statistics in the Pioneer Valley or Western Massachusetts, but we had to expand our search to get any statistics at all. And after some time researching, we were able to find a total of four recorded break-ins at marijuana establishments. Two of those break-ins were the same people at the same night, one after another, two locations in Raleigh, Massachusetts. So we've got, do you mind if I pass these out to the Board?
And do you know what kind of facilities they were? Who was it?
Yeah, I think they are, does it say in here? I think they were all stores. Yeah, they are all stores. It doesn't say, but yeah, they're all, they're all retail.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
None of them are cultivation.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
How many--
Did you get one?
I did. What was the total number of places that you saw? And only came up with four.
The total number of places we saw? Oh, we just, we researched news articles, news headlines, and crime stats.
Exactly. How many do you think you saw that were not a problem before you saw ones that were a problem?
Well, it would be the number of marijuana establishments operating in the state of Massachusetts.
And do you have any idea what that number might be?
Oof, that's a good question. Do you know where we're at right now? We have not kept up with that.
Ballpark? 100, 1,000?
More than 100, less than 1,000.
Okay.
I think--
500 ballparks? Does that sound about right? Licensed establishments? Yeah.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's, I'm going to, probably less than 500. I'm going to say 400 ballpark, and that's inclusive of, that's not, that wouldn't just be retailers. That's obviously inclusive of product manufacturers, cultivators, and so forth.
These are also all places that have security as well? Like similar, if not?
Yes, I mean, these are all licensed establishments, so they all have to have the bare minimum security required by the CCC, which is, that bare minimum is very substantial.
Oh.
Yeah, it's, I'm aware that there are places in California where there have been issues with crime in marijuana establishments. My impression, although I didn't research it, is that those are also high-crime areas in general. And there's an impression that the cannabis industry is an all-cash industry, which is becoming less and less true now that all the retailers around here are using, you know, virtual ATMs where people can pay with a debit card. Now there's also apps, mobile apps, that people can download for their phone, that they can pay just like a credit card, but these are companies that are willing to work with the cannabis industry. So it's a much less cash-heavy industry than it used to be, and the data really bears out that the security is clearly sufficient, and we don't have a crime problem associated with marijuana establishments in Massachusetts.
I did have a discussion with the chief the other morning, at the other afternoon at the parade, and he felt like the information that we were presented with at the last meeting out of California and Colorado was as impertinent as could possibly be for what goes on here.
Yes.
That was his impression. He said it has no bearing whatsoever on Oakland to Hatfield, period. So if you want to bring those statistics up, they're great to talk about, but they don't mean anything relative to the safety in Hatfield. That was his opinion. I'm not quoting him verbatim, but that's what he said.
Yeah. And this is, I didn't bring this data with me today, but there's a pretty substantial amount of research showing that actual decreases in crime around marijuana establishments, and that's purely because of the level of surveillance around these buildings.
I have a question.
Yes.
So the items that you raised, it seems like based on what was stolen, in all likelihood, all of these were retail establishments.
Yes.
And you mentioned that there's less and less of a cash, cash on-site, but this is, just to be clear, this is not a retail establishment and never will be, because retail establishments are not allowed in the rural residential zone in Hatfield. And so what kind of cash, if any, would be on this site? I mean, is it just petty cash that you have? I mean, there's no transactions occur. When someone comes to pick something up, they're picking it up, and there's probably some invoice that's submitted, and, but that cash is probably not sitting on-site. I don't know.
No, that's correct. There's, I mean, I'm a proselytizer for the cannabis industry, so I'm, you know, I can't help but talk about the data around retailers, but this is not a retailer. There is no reason why there would be anything other than petty cash, or no more cash than you'd find at any business. The business transactions that would be taking place are going to be wholesale sales, and they wouldn't be transacted in cash, and they wouldn't be transacted on-site.
If I can expound on that. It seems to me that the security issue for an establishment like that would be limited to a course of a stealable item within the course of a week or two's period of time. And if, what are you doing? Auto-flower, so maybe twice. You have two two-week periods, and I would imagine if you have any kind of security force that you'd be guarding that product. To break into a facility at any other time than that would be, there'd be no reason. I mean, the person could be charged with being stupid, I guess. But to my point, any security issues involved with this seem to me to be involved with issues that the grower himself is going to be worried about and not the residents around them. If someone is stealing marijuana from the facility, they're not going to be bothering the residents around. And it seems to me that it's a very specific time period that it would happen. I guess that's my outlook on security of the facility.
Good.
Any other comments around the security piece? So the piece that we looked at on our end was related to the, we were interested in the point that Mike Bartlett brought up around one of our bylaws that said that the marijuana plants, products, and paraphernalia should not be visible from outside the building in which the establishment is located, no outside storage is permitted. That is 7B.5, Section K of our bylaws. And so when I approached our attorney, Tom Mullen, about this, I will read his response, but basically it was, it could interpret, what Mr. Bartlett was trying to say is that he thinks that it was contradictory, saying that we should, that that section of our bylaws makes it seem like we shouldn't be allowing outdoor growing at all, rather than it's in the spirit of saying the building would maybe be the fence then at that point, is the way our bylaws is worded. So I'm going to read to what Attorney Mullen responded for the record. "Stephanie, I'm responding to your email of Friday to Marlene, which I received today, and to confirm the advice I just offered by telephone. You noted that a special permit applicant currently before the Planning Board wishes to grow marijuana outdoors. A member of the public has objected that such a use would appear to violate Section 7B.5. K of the zoning bylaws, which provides that, quote, 'marijuana plants, products, and paraphernalia-- and paraphernalia shall not be visible from outside the building in which the establishment is located. No outside storage is permitted," end quote. You noted that this and at least one other provision seem to be inconsistent with outdoor cultivation. Specifically, Section 7B.5.C requires a 500-foot setback from any school or similar pre-existing use. Such distance to, quote, "be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the building housing the facility in question to the nearest point of the building housing the proposed marijuana establishment," end quote. You asked for my advice as to whether, given those two provisions, outdoor cultivation is permissible in Hatfield? I believe that it is. Section 7B.4D provides that, in part, that a, quote, "marijuana cultivator," whether licensed as a marijuana cultivator or craft marijuana cultivator cooperative, may be located outdoors only in such zoning districts and subject to such standards and conditions, including special permit and/or site plan approval, as is required by these bylaws for such a use and purpose. Section 3 Table of Use Regulations, Agricultural Uses, subsection 3.11, end quote. The reference line of the Table of Use allows, quote, "marijuana cultivation outdoors," end quote, in the rural residential, outlying, whoops.
Residential.
Outlying residential, industrial, light industrial, and agricultural districts with a special permit from your board. Further, I note that Section 7B.5E establishes setbacks between outdoor or greenhouse cultivation facilities and pre-existing residences. It says that the distances set forth therein, quote, "shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the residential building to the nearest point of the security fencing associated with the proposed marijuana cultivator," end quote. In short, I believe the sections of our zoning bylaws addressing marijuana establishments contemplate both indoor and outdoor cultivation and set different requirements for each. It is unfortunate that Section 7B.5C and 7B.5K do not expressly state that they are limited in application to indoor facilities, but I believe that in context, such a limitation is implied. To infer from the absence of such an express limitation in those provisions, the outdoor cultivation is forbidden everywhere in town would plainly contradict Section 7B.4D and 7B.5E, as well as line 3.11 of the Table of Uses. I hope this is helpful. As always, feel free to call me. Thanks, Tom. That was a lot. But basically, yeah, what he's saying is referencing how one bylaw mentions the setbacks have to be from the building. The way that this phrase, the setbacks with outdoor grows have to be from the fencing makes it seem, say that it is in the spirit of fencing, I would say.
It certainly implies that it's, they wouldn't be making a bylaw if they weren't gonna let you do it.
Right.
The wording is fuzzy.
Yeah.
I think it's like the ordering of it is, yeah, like, there should be an outdoor section and an indoor section, but, yeah. And then also, the other kind of piece that we were looking into a little bit was the property values. And so I don't know if you did any of that on your end, but.
Yeah, so Jared Glansberger, who was with us last time, prepared that. He's participating over Zoom, but he's having trouble. I think he can't hear or be heard.
Do you have to, I just have to meet him?
Yeah.
Is it possible for him to?
Yeah.
He did email me the, or he texted me the PDF, but if possible, I'd rather not try to read it off my phone.
Oh, he's presenting. It looks like he's presenting right now.
But he looks like he's muted.
Yep.
Jared could unmute. Maybe he has to unmute from his end.
I think he has to unmute from his end.
Yeah. Can you text him and let him know that he should?
Oh, here we go. He says it looks like he's unmuted. Can he talk now?
Is your speaker on over there?
Looks like he's unmuted, but we can't hear him.
Maybe, maybe I could have him speak through my speakerphone.
Yeah, it looks like he's trying to talk here. I don't know if our volume is up and stuff. I don't know.
But you can see, is he able to share?
Yep.
His screen? Okay, then what I'll do is I'll have him.
Hi, Jared. We just can't hear you. I see you speaking. All right, we might have to have.
Okay. I'll have him, he's gonna call me. I'll put him on speaker.
But we see his screen too, so. And we apologize that folks in the public can't see this. The people virtually can see it, but the people not.
Hold him up to the mic.
It was his voicemail. I apologize.
He can't, I don't think.
Here we go.
He can hear us either, so.
Jared, I'm putting you on speaker.
He can hear us, it sounds like.
He needs to mute his speaker.
He needs to mute his speaker now.
Jared, can you mute your speaker so you don't get feedback?
Yep, I got it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So what we did was we looked at the existing outdoor facilities in Hatfield and Wheatley, and we looked at the dollar per square foot transactions in the last, the rolling last 12 months. And so what we see here is average dollar per square foot. These are on Long Plain Road over here in Wheatley, and these are additional transactions that looks like on Long Plain Road in Hatfield. So these are the most proximate transactions. So this is, in fact, the best information we have since they're in Hatfield and Wheatley. And so what we see is, on the right, some aggregate market information that was taken from Realtor.com. And so this slide was created earlier in May. And so at that time, this is the rolling 12 months aggregated information for the town of Hatfield, where we saw a median listing home price of $169 and 72 days on the market. So those are the kind of the key things that we look at to see whether, in the last 12 months of operation, the DMC farm in Wheatley or the RBG farm in Hatfield caused a lower-than-expected dollar per square foot, and I misuse the word "caused," correlated with lower-than-medium transactions. Because if that were the case, you would expect to see, you know, that these transactions in this area would be significantly lower than they otherwise might be. And so what we see here is that all of these transactions are above the median for Hatfield, and all of them are shorter than the median days on the market here. And so this is not looking at the most recent information, but a aggregated 12 months, which coincides with the time of operation for both RBG and DMC. And so what we're seeing here is really no influence on the, or certainly not under the median, influence on home prices in this area. And so it just isn't borne out in the information closest to these operations that you see a depression in the dollar per square foot pricing of homes.
So can you just?
These are transaction values. These are closed transactions, not listed values on the left.
So you're saying that on your, the chart that you've given us, the median listing home price was $169 per square foot?
Yeah.
And the median sold price was between $173 and $269 per square foot? Is that, and then $244 to $274, I guess one is.
That's right.
One is.
That's exactly right. That's exactly how to interpret that. So all of the transactions in this area are above the 50th percentile for Hatfield at that time, in the last 12 months, just taking a snapshot of since the two outdoor farms started operation, which was just about a year ago. Since that time, there has been no, the pricing, the closing transactions, the transactions that have closed, not the listing. And listing, you know, tends to be, I think in fact, they're at about 100% right now. So the transactions that closed are above what the median listing price is in this area around RBG and DMC.
Yeah, and some of the research that I was doing and talked to a few people, it's hard to correlate because we haven't had marijuana around for very long, is one piece. And then also, there are many factors that go into the housing market, and especially this past year. I can kind of see why the data might show that it's an increase, or at least more than the median, because just everything, the market's been out of control really the last year. So it's kind of, it's hard to find solid data that attributes to housing and property values, especially in this area, is what I've.
Yeah. I mean, we're certainly not claiming that cannabis outdoor farms raise the value, though that you could have that inference from this. But we're just saying that it doesn't depress it below median.
Right.
Right? We're just saying that at the very least, it doesn't do that. And I would agree with you that information is difficult to parse, but we're saying, look, this is what the average, the median, the 50th percentile house listed for, that is, that the sellers wanted to get, and that they got more than what they asked for in these areas around the farms.
Right. Okay. Any other questions for Jared around this from the board? Thank you, Jared.
I think we're good.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. High-tech.
Do we have anything else that we?
Those were the things, the outstanding items that we were asked to bring.
May I ask Chris a couple questions?
Sure, yeah.
So, Chris, on behalf of the applicant, I know that there were a lot of questions, and issues raised at the last meeting regarding, well, in particular, two items, but the one I want to focus on right now is fencing, which of course is an issue with any of these operations, given the need to, for security and the requirements of the CCC. So on your map here.
We're probably flipped today. Larger-scale version.
If there is one, that would be great. Because I just want to go, okay, well, and then I'm gonna have to have you go back, but that's fine. So I'm looking at this aerial photograph, and I just want to confirm that to the north of the property, that is a wooded area, right? That's a tree, that's, these are all trees right there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And then to the south of the property is similarly are all trees, right?
Yes, and also, you know, wetland, so essentially permanently wooded.
Right, right. But that's all heavily, both of those property lines or fence lines, if you will, are wooded.
Correct.
So the easterly leg of your parallelogram there is, faces the road, and that has no barrier between it and Straight's Road.
Correct.
And what, approximately, what's that distance of that fence line?
So let's see. It's 40 feet from the property line, and I'm estimating the property line's another 15 feet from the road, so I'd say about 55 feet overall from the edge of the road.
Right, but what's the length of that leg?
Oh, in this dimension?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna do sophisticated finger measurements here. Probably not quite 400 feet.
Okay, so about 400 feet that of the fence, that would be visible, if you will, if you were walking down or driving down Straight's Road.
Correct.
And Straight's Road in this area is where it's still dirt, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Now I'm gonna need you to go back to your other map. Okay, so on this map, for those that can't see it, you have indicated where the 500-foot point is, the bubble, if you will, around nearby residential units.
The red bubbles.
Right. Okay, so going to the west, there's obviously a ditch immediately to the west of that western fence line. Is that forested? Are those ditches forested, or is that just what I'm seeing in this aerial photograph suggests vegetation but not forest?
This ditch has some trees associated with it. I wouldn't go so far as to call it forested. This one is pretty clear. What you're seeing is the darkness from the saturated soils.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and this area here is actually field and not ditch. So I would say this entire field does not have mature trees in it.
Okay, so then the house that's, that, which is actually the Go Farm home, Eric Bezinski's house, that house, and I did my own fingering measuring, is about 1,500 feet, right, from the fence line?
Sounds about right.
If we take the house to the line being 500 feet, and then we take that same distance, it looks like it's about 1,500 feet. So they would have a view, if you will, of the fence, but from, somewhat unimpeded view of the fence from 1,500 feet.
Correct.
Of that western fence.
Impeded a little bit by this barn here, but yes, I would give you that.
Okay. The next, the only other house that's on the west side that sort of faces this is the next house down on the other side of North Hatfield Road.
How many years?
That one. And again, using the, you know, less than precise, but finger measurement, that looks like that's also about 1,500 feet away, but impeded by a fairly heavy grove of trees.
Yeah, so this area here is all wooded and also wetland, so permanently protected. And those agricultural exemptions don't apply to areas that are not fields.
So that house, unlike the Bezinski house at Go Farms, really doesn't have a direct view of that.
And also, this line is tree. This is a ditch, but it is.
Right, and I thought that was tree. Okay. Now going to the north, it doesn't look like there's any home that would have a direct view of this northerly fence line because of there not being a house there and also heavily woods from any home that might be, and even much further than 1,500 feet away from that fence. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. Even in this entire view, I believe that these are the only residences north of the property. You know, there are a few buildings over here that look more like farmland. There's potentially a house.
And all of them have a significant amount of forest land between them and the fence?
Correct.
And then to the south, it looks like there is one house that's within, just outside that 500-foot buffer, but it has sort of an oblique view of the southerly fence, but again through trees. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, the tree line here runs all the way up to the edge of the road.
Okay, and so, and then there's no homes immediately to the east of the property?
Correct.
Okay, so then the, really, the fence, if you will, in terms of any kind of immediate visual impact on the neighborhood and the landscape there, is really that easterly 400-feet of fence that runs along Straight's Road.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, the applicant from the board?
Would the, yes, may I?
Yeah.
Would the applicant entertain, since there is a fair amount of concern by some, although I will note, none of the, well, not the Go Farm folks who were here, I can't, unfortunately, well, we can watch the video, but Eric noted that he was, it seemed like he was less concerned with the project than he would be having a housing subdivision there, was I think the comment that he made.
For water runoff purposes, yeah.
When I spoke to him and went out there and rode the property with them all the way out to Straight's Road, to their barn, saw everything, his other concern is the infringement of water from the other parts of this property, not the part we're talking about right now, from the other parts of this property infringing on his. He lost animals to drowning last year because of the lack of drainage in there. Now, to me, a cooperative situation between all the people that are involved out there on North Hatfield Road, including the three new houses that just went up, that are having an impact on the water level there, and the Go Farm, and this project should get together and figure out the cost and the logistics of cleaning those ditches out. and figure out the cost and the logistics of cleaning those ditches out so that we have an amicable situation out there and no one's getting hurt.
Well, and that would be the case regardless of what other type of farming operation might have been here, and also having houses here would exacerbate that, but let me get...
And then you couldn't maintain the ditches.
Right, because they no longer be agricultural.
Correct, then those ditches would be do not touch permanently.
So, but getting back to where I wanted to go, would the applicant, since this easterly portion, 400 feet, which I know some of which is parking for employees, would the applicant, in addition to the security fence and the privacy screening that you would put, be willing to also put in some vegetative screening along that stretch there that would be not unlike what you've got to the north and the south, which I'm sure, given how tight they are, you've taken into account, or into, have taken into account for your security in terms of being able to have cameras, be able to see the fence line, even though there might be trees there, that you could put something along there, since that really is, in terms of any kind of significant visual impact, that seems to be the main point of 400 feet along Straits Road.
Bobby, you talking about arborvitae, or...
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to see something other than arborvitae sometime, but, you know, like...
That's the conversation we have with our clients a lot, is we can do better than...
Yeah, I mean, rhododendron trees stay green year-round, too, but I mean, something other, but yes, something that would be a visual, you know, landscaped visual barrier. I know that arborvitae is the, you know, and I live on Lynnseed Road, and we have a house that actually put arborvitae all around it, and you can't see that home at all anymore. That was their choice. They decided to do it. The arborvitae that the planning board required R.K. Miles to put in has grown in quite nicely, and you can barely see the back of R.K. Miles at this point. But if, it could be something other than arborvitae, but something like, that would provide that kind of evergreen barrier, that would then, I mean, it would...
Hopefully not inhibit the sunlight.
Right.
It would aestheticize, it would aestheticize, if that's a word, the look of that fence.
Right, right.
It sounds like we're getting a nod yes.
Yeah, without talking to my partners, I think we would definitely agree with that, some type of vegetation.
And I'll lean on the landscape architects in my office to come up with better than a line of little arborvitae soldiers.
Something that I also was thinking about, I know there's a lot of talk about the project now, but not necessarily, not that you want to see a project end, or, you know, like down the road kind of thing, but there's not really talk about like what happens if this project, like, were to leave, right? And so, one of the things that we are talking about now more with solar arrays and things like that is talking about having like some sort of stipulation or condition about potentially removing the fence if and when this business were to leave, depending on what would happen next, I guess, maybe, just in the spirit of farmland and keep, you know, just something to think about. I don't know if there's something we would want to think about with this potential application.
Well, we have, we conditioned solar arrays to have a bond put up so that indeed, if a solar developer skips town, we have the funding to remove the solar panels. And it would seem like if the owner of this property were to skip town, we would want to get that fence removed. I mean, presumably whoever buys it next would remove the fence, just like when people buy a home or a property, they have to remove outbuildings and barns and things like that, but it, but that's, this is the, this is the impact beyond what would normally happen if this was just an agricultural operation. I mean, those three hoop houses that you're putting in there, again, if we were not talking about a marijuana operation, we wouldn't even be having this meeting.
So, this came up at the, at our last meeting as well, and I wanted to jump in and say that the Cannabis Control Commission, as part of the, one of the requirements for the license is that there is a decommissioning bond set aside. So, it's a valid concern, and it's a concern the Cannabis Control Commission has as well, because if a marijuana establishment ceases to operate, they can't leave cannabis in the ground and equipment that's contaminated with cannabis. So, there is a, there's a decommissioning bond in place that every licensee is required to maintain that is, that's used for removing the equipment and facility if it ceases to operate.
But doesn't, I need to look into that piece then, because that doesn't sound like fencing to me. That sounds like marijuana.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not limited to marijuana. I think that's the, that's the concern that, that is the reason that it's there, that that requirement's there, but it's a general decommissioning bond, so it would vary from establishment to establishment. I mean, outdoor cultivation is still relatively rare in the state, but for an outdoor facility like this one, the main, the main equipment that would be, that would need to be removed would, besides the inventory, marijuana itself, would be the fencing.
And the hoop houses, although those could be of use to somebody if they were going to farm the property afterwards.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect the hoop houses to need to be removed, actually, but yeah, the fencing and the marijuana, those are the things that are really specific to this use.
It almost seems like the Cannabis Control Commission has preemptively dealt with this potential problem about how to deal with post, post-facility structures.
Yes.
So, I have a question, though, because as I understand it, this property is going to be owned and then leased to the individuals who will then get the Cannabis Control Commission licenses. Is that correct?
That's correct, and actually, it's the, so the licensee is Hatfield Pharmacy, or the potential licensee, they're applying for their license. That's, Hatfield Pharmacy is the applicant in this case for the special permit. So, the special permit holder and the licensee are one and the same.
So, they would then be subject to those CCC's decommissioning requirements?
Yes, absolutely.
Can I raise a question? There's, I just have a concern, and it's not, I guess it applies to this because it applies to the other grow that the Simarowskis have going on, and I actually spoke to this, spoke to them on this. The grow they have going on, on North Hatfield, there's an eight-foot fence around it, and you can see the bottom of the back line of the fence. So, obviously, anything growing in there, you can see. So...
Can you just explain what you mean by that?
When you're, when you're on, when you're on, I don't know, is it Main Street still? When you're out there, when you're there, and you look at where the grow is happening, the back line of the fence, you can see the bottom of it. You can actually see land and then the bottom, so it would be impossible for there to be a plant there that wouldn't be visible from the road.
The road is a little bit higher.
Yeah, it's a topography thing, and it doesn't apply to what we're talking about today, because the topography is such that from Straits Road, the land goes up, and the fences are going to be about 12 feet high. You'll never see anything from there. My point on this is more about when there is a violation of zoning, and this is egregious, and they'll agree to me that this is a problem. How is this addressed?
So, that's technically someone would, that's something would raise with the zoning enforcement officer, which is Kyle Scott, who's also our building inspector. And so, that would be on Kyle to be doing that, and then like we can ask for updates and stuff on that, but it's solely Kyle's purview for that. And then also, like, potentially, I don't know, Cannabis Control Commission, if there would be any way, if that would be something that they would reach out to them about, but if that was a, if that was required of the Cannabis Control Commission, which I don't think the privacy, not visible pieces, the Cannabis Control Commission, that's us.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that the eight-foot is the industry standard, obviously, it's sub, it's not sufficient for the area. And again, it doesn't apply to this, it's something to be addressed, but my question to them was, should there be a zoning violation in the future? How do, how is this going to go? I mean, how are these things going to be addressed? What's the mechanism in place for these things to be fixed? And I don't know, maybe Bernie, you could address that. We spoke briefly about the problem down on North Hatfield Road, and I was, and I was, my opinion was, was that they had a plan in place to fix it, and this was what was going to go forward and everything was, it wasn't a way to skirt the law, in other words. They had a plan to fix this problem, and I just kind of wanted to bring this to light and to show that there, that there is a willingness on their part to work within the zoning laws. They're not just out there skirting them, because I had numerous people that I spoke to who were opposed to this plan approach me about that specific thing, and it doesn't apply directly.
Eric Van Gill's letter gets into it as well, yeah.
So, I don't know if Bernie would be willing to address that for us?
I just want to stay, I don't want to have Bernie talking about a different site, because Hatfield Pharmacy, Bernie's a partner in Hatfield Pharmacy, but I don't, but they're not involved with that site.
Okay, my point isn't, my point isn't the issue there. My point is going forward, should there be an issue?
With this site.
You know, how is this, how is this addressed? Is it, is it going to be something that we're going to have to chase, I guess is my question?
Yeah, and so, I think that, you know, in terms of this particular project, the experience that you had with Bernie discussing the issue on the other site is how it would go, but fundamentally, procedurally, what the town can do is that a violation of a condition of the special permit or the zoning is enforced by the zoning enforcement officer and building inspector the same way as a building code violation is, and so if it's egregious enough and there's a failure to fix it, then, then he can, you know, revoke a certificate of occupancy and close the project.
Season decision.
Can revoke the special permit.
That's generally a verbal warning than a written warning, and then could be fines, and then what, land court, or, so yeah, that's generally how the process goes when I spoke with Kyle.
I guess I wanted to mention it, just so going forward, you know, everyone's aware that we, that this is on, these things are on our radar, you know, we're not just skirting over them.
Well, and it's good of you to bring that up as a new member. So, we have had to deal with this in the past, not necessarily with marijuana operations, but everything from getting the screening up on, that was required by the special permit at the Helena site. We had issues with some other businesses in town that were not living up to their special permit, and so we all had to go through this education as we became new members of the board, myself many years ago, Steph and Jimmy more recently. The planning board has no policing power. The policing power of the zoning bylaws, or the policing behind the zoning bylaws, is the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, who in this town happens to be the same person. So, that's where we, that's where residents need to go to express concerns or an issue. In fact, Stephanie and I were getting emails over the holiday weekend from someone who was very concerned about somebody who they knew was ignoring their special permit, and we got in touch with Kyle and had them, had him go out there, but even if we were to show up, it would be you and, you know, you and what, police force.
Right, and then the other piece with that is, like, Kyle doesn't report to us, we don't manage Kyle. Kyle reports to select board and Marlene, so the town administrator, so there's also like...
A little bit of a disconnect there between us and the enforcement officer.
Okay, thank you.
With that, yeah, so are there any other questions we have here for the applicant? Or would we like, we can also close public hearing, too, if we want?
Well, I would suggest that if, if there's, on what we were discussing tonight, and what we brought up, if there, maybe to entertain if there's any questions or comments that people want to make specifically on the items that we continued the meeting to address, because that was the reason we continued the meeting, was for these items that were raised tonight, but it's up to you.
Yeah, I like also, yeah, it's like the balance of letting the public have, bring up their questions related to this, and then also not wanting to hear all the same things that we've heard last time. So, if there's any questions related on to the things that we heard tonight, if anyone would like to make a guess, and come to the microphone, please. And also, if, yeah, if we've heard this, if it's something that's already been brought up at the last meeting, or something like that.
No, it pertains to tonight.
Thank you.
Ben Hilton, I live at 121 Hatfield Road. I guess my question is for Chris and Berkshire Design, I heard you come up with your water numbers and, I'm a numbers guy, you know, kind of offhand, and at the last meeting, you talked about 44,000 plants roughly on this three-acre parcel, you know, just crunching numbers, 18,000 gallons, I'm assuming, per day. I mean, that's less than a four-tenths of a gallon of water per plant on a design day, where if you go online and look up the average consumption of a marijuana plant, it's four to six gallons per day. So, I'm just wondering, you know, where that, I do understand the water table and rain and things, and you're basing it on other facilities, but I'm not aware of, you know, the type of grow that's in these other facilities. So, I'm just, you know, questioning the numbers based upon the last meeting of, you know, 44,000 plants. So, I mean, that's, if you, if you do it that way, it's only, you know, four-tenths of a gallon of water a day on a, on a design day, where if you do the research online, it's four to six gallons.
So, is your concern about though, that that's an, a gross, an underestimation of water use?
I'm wondering, you know, I know they're basing it on other facilities, but, you know, I'm basing the numbers, just crunching it in my head, back here on my phone, off of, you know, what they said at the last meeting and what you can find online for research for water consumption for an outdoor grow facility, so...
I found the same information you found, and it talked about yield, so the more, the yield you're looking for, the more water, but those are also talking about overhead irrigation or not drip irrigation.
And that's just a clarification.
And uses a massive amount more of water.
With the overhead?
With the overhead, or with, even, even if you're watering by hand, I mean, drip irrigation is, is the way to go. You see all these people that are in this hydroponic stuff? It's basically the same thing. There's a drip of feed, and that's what's going on. That's how they can make it work with less water. He's targeting the root system directly as opposed to wasting a lot of water around the plant.
That, and then any other comment? Then I'd like to have the applicant respond to that, yeah?
Well, I just wanted to point out that he had, he had mentioned that they have a sensor system, so it only waters when necessary, so I assume they have it geared so that the plant is consuming the water that's, that it's being given, as opposed to just making sure there was in blunderance there.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a numbers clarification in my head. I'm a numbers guy, so that didn't add up to me.
And I got the same exact numbers you did.
So, and then the other question I had was, you know, you mentioned irrigation and fertilization system. What is the impact of the fertilization system that's going to be in that drip, going to be on the area surrounding this site and the, and the waterways and the runoff? Because that waterway, if you follow it all the way down far enough, goes into the Mill River. You did, Chris mentioned irrigation slash fertilization system, so my concern would be, what's the impact of the fertilization, you know, it might, might, might be minimal, but, you know, that's another question that I think should be, you know, considered in this.
Yeah, yeah, if we have the applicant answer that, and also, is there any other questions related to that, otherwise, then I'll have...
No, that's all I really had on the water, you know. I think my other kind of comments were brought up at the previous meetings, you know. I think the only other thing, you know, I know, I don't know if the town of Sheffield was discussed at the previous meeting or not. I grew up in Ashley Falls, my family lives in Sheffield, you know. I know odor was discussed, but you can drive right down Route 7 at 50 miles an hour from Great Barrington in Cannon, Connecticut, and you can drive by a spot on Route 7, and you can smell it, and there's two acres of woods between there and that field, and then you can drive by the 10 greenhouse facility, that's right next to Route 7, and you can smell it. So, odor should still be something that is considered, so...
Thank you. Yeah, if the applicant would speak to the question of the water, the volumes, and then also the potential for runoff of fertilizer, also noting that Cannabis Control Commission requires that cannabis be grown organically with organic methods, which could be considered less hazardous than traditional farming on that land.
For the most part, I'm going to defer to the farmer, but yeah, what I would highlight is that sort of at a, at a high level, the question of fertilizer... of fertilizer is the impact will be far less than any conventional crop that would be grown here, especially with the, with the targeted drip irrigation. And yeah, there's, there's a long list of potential nutrient sources that are forbidden by the CCC. But I think Bernie knows a lot more about this stuff than I do. I just take, take that as an input to some of the other questions.
Yeah, and the water piece too.
Right.
There are a lot of variables, soil type. We're using the plastic mulch to prevent, you know, the wind from drying out the soil beneath the plant. We're targeting the roots with the nutrient management program. There's just a lot of different variables we're looking at. As far as water volume, you know, it's, it's what, it's, the amount is being used at RBG right now. We're looking at about 18,000 gallons.
And it's the same size of a facility as the one that is being proposed?
A hundred thousand is the max.
The only difference between the size, it being an open field is that there's greenhouses proposed for this space versus the one that's on.
Correct.
Main Street.
And so it's primarily a drip irrigation system as opposed to the overhead irrigation system that was mentioned earlier?
Absolutely, yes.
And you're using only organic fertilizers? Could you tell us a little about?
It's commercial grade fertilizer, which is allowed.
Okay.
Any other questions from the public about, related to things that were spoken to tonight? Yeah?
Elizabeth Behringer, 17 Cronin Hill Road. Just with respect to the water, if there is a significant drought, as we've, much of the country's been affected, including Massachusetts, if the well water is not sufficient, is the applicant going to be seeking to use town water?
That is a great question.
Well, there is no town water to this.
Yeah, and there isn't town water to that spot.
There's no water there.
So that would have to be something that would have to be extended from that last property on Straits Road.
Right, there's no town water to this.
I understand, but there is access, should they want to put it in? And is that going to be what they're going to do?
Well, they would have to get approval to do that. I mean, that's not something that you just do overnight. I mean, we're spending millions of dollars to put in a sewer system out on Route 5 with state grants and we spend millions of dollars.
I understand that, Mr. Wagner.
Yeah, so.
But I'm inquiring, would the plan, would their ultimate plan be to seek to use town water?
I don't know. I mean, it's the applicant.
Well, we, we would ask the applicant, yes.
Okay, will you be using town water?
No, it's a risk of farming that, you know, in the drought, if there's no water's available, you can lose your crop. But according to the irrigation company we're dealing with, the well company we're dealing with, there's sufficient water there.
And just by way of comparison, again, some of the team members are involved with the farm, particularly at Seven River Road and Waitley, where municipal water is available. There are no provisions for a connection and they're operating entirely on well water.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead. Do you have any other questions?
I don't have other questions. I do have comments to make.
Yeah, related to the things that were mentioned tonight.
Related to things that were said this evening. I just want to point out that my brother counsel researched break-ins and he referenced there being nothing in the local area. That is incorrect. There were break-ins in Greenfield at a retail facility. Secondly, I think it was my other brother counsel who appeared on by Zoom. It would be somewhat disingenuous to say that there's no effect on property values because it's a fluctuating market. And as we all know, in the last several years, property values have increased, the cost of purchasing property has increased substantially. So there is, we're not comparing apples to apples. And lastly, with respect to the comment from town council making reference with respect to the bylaws, again, town council is making an opinion and it would ultimately be a court of law that would decide whether or not the bylaw is consistent. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yep?
Devin Elliott, 121 North Hatfield Road as well. I just wanted to read something that I wrote because it just, it kind of encompasses all my thoughts on this. Have you ever driven down North Hatfield Road going south? If you have, you can see the scenic integrity would be disrupted with the installation of large fence fencing and greenhouses inhibiting the view on the left side of the road as you walk or drive. Have you ever enjoyed a warm summer night on your front porch and then realized you didn't enjoy that anymore because of the new, the new strong odor of marijuana plants that is now overwhelming the air? It's very important that the opinions and concerns of the residents of the neighboring properties and the community are heard. I'm not against the applicant's business plan, but I do ask that the location be reconsidered. The applicant will not be affected by what concerns myself and my family. This project is in a proposed location, in its proposed location will not aid in the quality of life for the community in which they want to do business. We ask for reconsideration to act in good faith with fellow Hatfield residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or, yep, correct.
Greg O'Master, 123 North Hatfield Road. So I have a first question for Mr. Chamberlain. So Chris, you work for Berkshire Design. You're a civil engineer. Is that correct?
Can you address the board and then we'll address them just to.
I'd like to know if he's a civil engineer. So are you actually a specialist in water runoff?
Can you?
Are you a specialist in water runoff issues?
Yeah, are you a specialist in water runoff issues, Chris?
I would say yes, a senior management.
So is he a hydrologist or just a civil engineer?
Are you just a hydrologist or a civil engineer?
I'm not a groundwater hydrologist or anything like that.
So that is one point of consideration. The next thing I have a question about is odor control. Because at the last meeting, Mr. Chamberlain himself said that I know that we'll be discussing odor control at some point in this meeting. And that never happened during the last meeting for whatever reason, and that's fine. But I would like to bring that up again. Because again, as I sat in our backyard last weekend, and it was 99 degrees out with our neighbors and the wind was blowing from this proposed site to our backyard, my question is, should I sit out there in the middle of the summer with my grandchildren when the odor of marijuana is coming into my backyard? So it may be easy for the board to say, well, that's not a big deal. Well, I guess I can't go swimming in the winter. So it's a big deal to the people that live on that street. And I have no problem with Smarowskis. I have no problem with their business plan. Like my other neighbor said, we have a problem with the odor that's going to be emanated from this farm. I also have a question for the board. Is that what exactly is the planning board's idea on fence height and screening?
Yeah. The way that the bylaws worded, it says that it's the visibility, right? So it's enough, it can't be visible if we want to interpret that subsection of the bylaws that says building, visible, visibility.
So is, is eight feet high the industry standard?
It's the cannabis controls requirement. We.
At eight feet?
We defer to, please, if the applicant would respond to that relative to what the Cannabis Control Commission requires.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I have, but it, it seems to always be eight feet. I would defer that that's, that's the requirement from the CCC.
Will there be any chance that marijuana will be growing taller than eight feet?
Bernie?
The auto flowers that we're growing will not grow taller than eight feet.
So to the board, the individual right here is a proponent to this project and spoke at the last meeting. Now, I may not be the smartest person in the world, but the marijuana in that picture with that individual that spoke at this meeting the last time, the plants in that meeting are definitely more than eight feet tall and that's higher than the fence, fellas.
He was just said though, that, that what they would be growing would not be eight feet. There's not just like one type of marijuana. There's many different types.
But it clearly shows that they are more than eight feet tall.
Oh, it can certainly grow more than eight feet tall, but it's, it's a choice of the farmer and, and the style of.
And then they would definitely be in violation of our bylaws because then it would be visible.
So you lead me to my next point. Thank you. So violation of bylaws. So we're sitting outside on a sunny hot day and the wind blows across. So I call Kyle Scott, Kyle, I have a complaint about odor. What's the remedy? Is Kyle going to go over there and cut the crop down? I don't think so. What's going to happen is the residents of the street are going to sit and smell that product for the rest of the summer until it's harvested. That's the issue with the whole thing. If they want to grow marijuana over there in a greenhouse, they have maybe a fighting chance of controlling the odor. And it was also brought up about the smell of farm. Well, common odor doesn't spink for months on end, people. And we all know that.
And I think they said that the marijuana will only, when only when it's flowering is when it'll smell, which if, because it's all outside, it's not like there'll be like different waves of growing cycles. So it should only be for a couple of weeks if I remember saying that last year.
And then one more thing, we're talking about.
Last year, last month.
Irrigation. So I'd like to know if Bernie knows, what size emitters are we using on the plants?
The size of what? I'm sorry?
Emitters.
Emitters.
An emitter is actually what? Drops the water next to each plant.
Yeah, so the drip irrigation, what size, what is the emitters?
There are no emitters in the drip line.
So you're using drip tubing or drip emitters?
Drip tubing.
Okay, so drip tubing also has a rate, gallons per hour. So do we know what that rate is?
Do you know the rate of the gallons per hour?
I don't know the rate of him, but we're using 18,000 gallons over, per day.
And that was last year? Would you consider last year a dry year or a wet year or an average year?
It was a very wet year. Prior, that's, as Chris said, that was the maximum. You know, we can use less than that.
Right.
I guess that's basically all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the public related to what, yeah, what was said tonight?
Patron Ellen F's, 9 Cronin Hill Road. I'm just wondering, like, I know my husband Eric Van Giel put like a very lengthy letter in, like eight pages. How will that come back? I understand it might be too long to read all here. They're all like very valid points. Will they come back in minutes or?
They will absolutely be in the minutes.
Okay.
And we all read it ahead of time as well. I guess like the, the point of the, the letter would be for us to read and consider into our, into our decision making tonight. And a lot of it, like it was very well written and had a lot of similar points to what he brought up last, last month. And I, I feel like reading it would be, it'll be available in the minutes next month when we approve those minutes. I mean, we could read it, but I also feel like we've all read it as the board, as the people who are the decision makers of that.
I just want to make sure like his voice is heard and it will, yeah, when it comes into the minutes and in the, in a possible decision.
Yeah, just like, just like there'll be a recap of everyone's sentiments in the next month's minutes, his actual whole thing, word for word, will be in here because it's.
Unfortunately, some of the things that he expresses in the letter that he wants to see changed are not changes that we can make. There are changes that have to be made at town meeting.
Yes.
Right. And then there's other legitimate pieces related to this applicant as well, yeah.
All of which he brought up at the last meeting.
Yep.
If not expounded upon in the letter. Right. Okay, thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to in a comment? Oh.
Elizabeth Behringer, 17 Cronin Hill Road. And just in response to what you indicated with respect to the odor only occurring when the flowering is taking place, that is also somewhat disingenuous because the plants have odor far longer than just during the flowering period. And I, I think that is a fact that the planning board seems to want to, or it appears that you want to overlook that. And that odor is something that affects the own, property owners and residents in town that live near these facilities. It affects their quiet enjoyment, their right to have a life in their own homes. They can't open windows because it stinks. You can't go outside because it stinks. It's truly a problem. And with no ability to have an odor mitigation system when you're growing outside, that's a significant problem for virtually hundreds of people. And unless you're living near a facility, you don't understand how significant that odor is. And I just want you to remember that.
May I, can I comment that quickly?
Yeah, because we really haven't talked about odor as a board that much, so.
I just want to, this is where I, I come from on this. I live on, I live on Prospect Street and the farmer across the street from me grew hemp two years ago, a field full of hemp. Hemp is just as smelly as marijuana. It's just, it's bigger than marijuana. It looks like marijuana. It essentially is marijuana. And I can tell you that it never affected me in the smell. And this is just anecdotal on my part. I understand that. I understand what, I understand where everyone's coming from. And, and this is a big, this is a big cloud on, on the thing. The odor part of it is a big cloud and it is something to consider, absolutely. Having said that, I think that odor mitigation outside in a, in a farming community on a, on a plant that is in the ground is, is, it's kind of just something that's going to be. And, and the town, the town voted to allow the cultivation of marijuana.
With all due respect, Mr. Bell.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to tell you, I live near and am about to live again near a hemp facility. And this planning board, the other members of this planning board know my position very significantly. I am clearly opposed to it. The odor was unrelenting for an entire summer. I suspect it's going to be just as unrelenting this summer. And it is, it's unhealthy, it's unpleasant. People have to keep their windows closed.
May I just, may I interject? Are you, are you speaking of a hemp grow?
I, I'm speaking about hemp grow now specifically because you referenced being near a hemp facility. So I, I understand there's nothing I can do about the hemp and I, I realize that. I, I've done my research. But I'm just saying, when you say that you live next to it and there was no smell, then clearly you were upwind of it because the entire street of Cronin Hill Road and half of Depot Road reeked of hemp. And so we're in the zone from this facility air wise. That's the direction the wind flow goes. So yet again, we're going to have reeking outdoor marijuana. So I, I just, the bylaws begin with talking about people's enjoyment of their land and the town being open and understanding to the fact that, that people have a right to enjoy their property. And I would say to you, no one in line, in the wind line of this property will enjoy the smell of marijuana.
I may actually just, so that it's clear to the folks that are here as well as people that are on television, the planning board, as you noted, and I just want to make sure it's clear to everybody, we have no jurisdiction or authority over any hemp operation. It's considered agriculture. We even, we are in a right to farm town. So any.
And I'm aware of that.
Oh, no, but you implied early on that the planning board.
I only raised it because Mr. Bell did.
Right. So the planning board has no jurisdiction or approval of the hemp operations, whether it's on Prospect Street or on Depot Road and Cronin Hill Road. Those are considered agricultural operations in a right to farm town. It's just.
I didn't want to open a can of worms. I'm just, you know, I think that I'm, I was, I have, I have been out gathering opinions of the town. have been out gathering opinions of the town people, you know? I haven't been sitting here just making, just sitting on my chair making opinions and it seems to be a relatively prevalent opinion in town. And I do hear the concerns out there, I do.
And also noting that the hemp growing, there isn't, there are no setback requirements, so everyone in that neighborhood...
It's right up against it.
Is right up against it as opposed to the 500-foot setback that we have required through our marijuana growing. That was really an outcome of that project on, on, for this project on Depot Road.
It actually seems like that may be a bit spiteful, the hemp grow there, in my opinion, looking outside in, not having a part of it.
Well, those people invested in that property.
We're talking about this person.
Anyway, I'm sorry, we digress.
So they invested in that property, they can't grow pot there, but they're allowed to grow hemp there, so...
I guess that's kind of my point.
Right, right. And if they chose to grow cabbage there, they gotta go to the field of cabbage.
I know there's situations where farm, this is all kind of straying from the point, where farmers, where farmers will dump rotten potatoes in a field and let them rot and there's nothing you can do about that either. Smell is always, is always, always a concern and I am very mindful of what everyone's saying to me about it, I am.
Can I, can I make a comment about odor? The ordinance, just like pretty much every ordinance I've seen for marijuana in municipalities, does, it does prohibit odor that's nauseous or causes a nuisance or impairs public comfort. And the applicant intends to comply with the zoning ordinance. It sounds like a lot of the concerns that are being raised about odor are not specific to this, this application, but rather are concerns that would apply across the board to, to any outdoor marijuana grow, or maybe even indoor marijuana grows. This application is made under the current zoning ordinance, which does allow for outdoor marijuana, and it does have a limitation on nauseous odors. So there's, so this application is, does fully comply with, with the ordinance as it is. Someone had said, what, you know, if I can smell it and I contact the building commissioner, is he just gonna go tear up the farm? Obviously not, but that, but if there was a concern about odor, contacting the building commissioner would be where to start. And of course, it's going to be measured against the greater, you know, the environment of a farming community and it's not going to be, it's not going to be based on the individual's subjective perception of odor, but an odor that becomes a nuisance, certainly there is recourse for the community.
Right. And then there's also the whole, the option to, to amend any sort of permit, special permit or something like that, if that was to be an issue coming down the road as well with smell.
I have a brief, if I could just prove it.
Yeah.
Rob Wykoff, four North Hatfield Road. I just was really disappointed with the, what was brought forth for discussion on the criminal or the crime aspect of this and the real estate aspect. Both, both of those seem to be presented, we're being told, well, this is the best thing we can give you for evidence because, look, it's from Hatfield, it's from Whately, where marijuana grows really don't exist. You keep citing Main Street, I didn't even know it existed. So how's that gonna affect land value or property values, you know? Oh, it didn't affect property values. Nobody even knows that exists. I'm saying if this continues and we make Hatfield a destination for marijuana agriculture, there could still be an effect on real estate. So why aren't we studying the effects of real estate pricing in places where marijuana outdoor grows do, outdoor grows do exist and have existed for a little bit, period of time? I mean, that's like saying, you know, having your first beer and then going to the doctor and saying, "Hey, has it affected my liver?" No, awesome, I'm gonna drink a bunch of beer now, forever. You know, you want to study the effects of something where whatever's being introduced has been there for a while. And I think that was, the real estate statistics are completely ridiculous. First of all, there was no attempt to isolate the analysis to properties adjacent or in a close proximity. You would take a broad brush at Hatfield Real Estate, oh, yeah, I'm not surprised it's going up. I mean, just look at Main Street now versus six years ago.
Well, actually, you couldn't see it, but he only looked at properties that were in close proximity to the Main Street grow and the, and the facility.
Again, I, okay, I didn't, I didn't see that, but I still would contend that that's still looking too close. You're still looking too close at Hatfield and Whately where this is still a really new thing. And I, and I think a lot of the concerns and the anecdotal, albeit anecdotal, evidence from other states is being kind of like brushed aside. And I really think that the board should, should maybe ask some, some experts from outside of the state or wherever there is, wherever there has been this sort of operation. So that's on the real estate thing, I kind of went to that first. On the crime thing, it's almost the same idea, just as an, I mean, crime trends take time. You can't just look, well, hey, look, we legalized driving without a license, it hasn't been a single problem.
Right.
The next day, okay, well, come back to me in four years or whatever, you know? Whatever changes or, so to say that we haven't had a problem in Hatfield with the one grow that had, what, a half a season and the other one that I don't even know where it exists...
The processing facility? There's a processing facility on five and 10 and then...
To use that as the example, it's just, is right back to what I'm saying. You're looking at something that's just not, it's apples to oranges and, and they're, you know, for instance, I'll give you an example, there was the, a big dirt bike trend that originated in Baltimore, five, seven years ago, something like that. Not a big deal up here in Hatfield, right? Wasn't a big, not a big deal in Massachusetts. Nobody paid attention to it. Well, it took time. Five, seven years later, every single police department is dealing with this and, oh, well, it's just, it's just rabble-rousing. Well, somebody was shot on a dirt bike and the guy escaped on a, on a off-road dirt bike in Boston the other day. So these things do develop over time and to sit there and say that, well, there's no problem yet in Hatfield for something that just started a year or two ago, basically those two questions have not been answered tonight. Those statistics are worthless to look into the future.
Okay.
Thank you. I think our police chief is a very honest and forthright person to have looked into this extensively enough to have put his name on the opinion.
I understand, he's still...
Let me finish, I let you finish, let me finish. He put his name on the opinion that says that he sees no problem with this. Now, do you think that he's unqualified? Do you think that he's unqualified?
I think that his opinion, admittedly by what he said, was based on what has happened in Hatfield.
It's not only that.
So that opinion is very qualified. If I want an opinion about the effect of crime right now in Hatfield, I don't want that opinion. I want the effect of crime, I'm gonna finish, on communities that have had outdoor grows with millions of dollars of product behind a flimsy fence, okay? I want to know how many, what the effect on crime has been in those communities, not in Hatfield.
Yep.
That's great. His opinion is his opinion based on Hatfield, Whately, did not answer my question.
Yep.
I'm not quite bringing to question his ability to answer the question, it's just not, it wasn't the right answer, it wasn't the right question that was being answered.
Was it the right answer for you?
Wasn't the right question that was being answered. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I agree that real estate is hard to say, to figure out, like, where I come from with the real estate pieces is, I don't think there's enough data and time to actually know what the impacts are, so when you can relate relative to this. And especially, there's so many other factors, you can't extrapolate.
May I just say one thing? Just to your point, I think if we were to approve tonight a three and a half acre grow facility, by no means are we setting up Hatfield as a destination for big marijuana cultivation. I mean, why would you, you want all of this evidence about all this crime and all of that? What evidence do you have to suggest that that's what we're trying to do here?
I don't have evidence that you're trying to make this a destination.
No, but that's what you said, right?
I'm just looking at what's the inevitable outcome. I mean, you haven't, you haven't barred any, you haven't, you haven't set a bar or a limit. I mean, I don't know how many more of these places are gonna go off.
Well, you obviously weren't here during the Depot Road, Prospect Street hearings. No. Okay.
And again, those are, limits are another thing that you can always change with the zoning bylaws, we can put limits in place if we wanted to at any time, if we felt like we were becoming...
With the master plan committee, we have, I mean, there's lots of questions to come up. Should we have limits on these kind of facilities? We have a limits on retail, which was, were, you know, somewhat required under the state statute and we've limited it to no more than two. Should we limit the amount of solar operations that occur in town?
Yeah, probably, that's a separate discussion.
So, but, you know, how many of us here have asthma from fossil fuel plants? Okay? So lots of issues for us to address, but those are the kinds of things that we can address during our master planning process.
Last comment for, and then we'll close in the public hearing, I think.
Yeah, I can't help but sit here and this is the second meeting I've been to in regards to this project and it's just very heavily weighted from the board as a non supporter of this, that you have already made your decision. You're not really helping to support anybody unbiased, it feels very, you're almost oppressive to the people that are, that are not wanting this.
Condescending would be the word, actually.
It's very, it's very disappointing.
Just for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry if people feel that way. Sometimes the process also makes it come off a little more impersonal than we would want it since sometimes it needed to be a little impersonal at times too, but...
Not at all condescending.
I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing.
Eric is here. Sorry, we didn't see the virtual people. I don't know if we, there's been issues with volume and here being able to hear people virtually, so Eric, if you would like to speak, I'm not sure how... Gerard, is there a volume piece working yet?
Try now.
Is it the like volume on the microphone thing or anything like that?
I can't hear you.
Yeah, we can't hear him. I guess the other option would be for Eric to call someone and we could put you on speaker and then that'll be the last comment we'll take before we move ahead with the process. I see he's on the phone right now.
Can you hear us? Can you hear?
I got a text earlier that it was very hard to follow the meeting, even on YouTube.
Well, the town hall does not have the best direct connection and that's part of the issues. But the recording will be on later tonight, so you can watch it.
Hey, Eric, we can hear you now.
I don't think you can hear us.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, you sound great. We're taking comments based, oh, yep, we're just gonna take a...
Master.
Sorry, I'm just saying, we're talking, taking comments based on things that were brought up tonight. So if you have a last person to speak before we move along with, with the next phase of the hearing, so go ahead.
Yeah, I wrote a letter, as you're very well aware, and I, you're obviously unable to hear the first hour, and I'm just wondering why it didn't get read because it's got very valid points and I feel nobody reads the minute, we all know that, other than the board members and a few very, very interested people. I feel my letter is completely being ignored because I address a lot of bylaws that are in violation, that this applicant will be in violation of, also at the Main Street side. The CCC is completely useless in policing and enforcement and in the town of Hatfield, we have a very broken system of policing and enforcement, especially when it comes to odor. And the bits and pieces that I was able to hear, everybody seems to dismiss odor as, yeah, it happens. It's not farming, it is not agriculture, it's not protected under Title 97. This is an industry. It's not, the odor needs to be addressed and they can't address it because they can't control it. It's very simple. As I said in my letter, and I think you may have addressed it, but I'm not sure because I can hear, maybe town council weighed in, our bylaws are conflicting. That needs to get addressed, this they need to get tabled. And I really want you to read my letter, but I, I think I'm pretty much powerful at this point.
We read the part of your letter that was, you know, the public forum piece that was related more towards Mar, I don't know, it looks like you're having trouble hearing. We were, we read the part of your letter that addressed overall your concerns with the bylaws and asking us to draft new bylaws. And then the other piece, you know, we, the whole board read the rest of your letter ahead of time, it'll be in the minutes. And this, you know, the point of writing the letter is to help the board with their decision and so, and weigh in consideration of the decision, so that was in part the reason why we chose not to read it. And a lot of it was brought up in your previous, in last month's meeting as well, and it's not an attempt to silence you because your voice, if anything, you'll have more documentation in our minutes with your letter. If the point is just to have other people in the audience hear your points...
They were raised at the last meeting.
Yeah, almost, yeah. I'm just, yeah, it's just, we have it, we have it, it's, we've read it. If anything, we've had more time to sit with it than other folks who've raised comments. And we all said that...
If I may summarize it, because obviously you're not gonna read it, I get that, there is quite a few, not exaggerating, there's quite a few bylaws that protect, you know, the rural character of the town of Hatfield, the aesthetics and all that stuff. I won't go into details. I just want to make everybody aware that, and it's in my letter, I know, and it's gonna be in the minutes, but we as voters and taxpaying residents of Hatfield, we, yes, voted to approve the cultivation of marijuana. By that vote, we did not approve a blanket location to put these things up. You know, and we also voted on the bylaws to protect rural character, property values, aesthetics and all the other stuff that's in numerous new bylaws. And I don't want that to be ignored, everybody to know that, so, and that's it.
Thank you.
Read the minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Yeah, and the point of, yes, there's multiple times we voted on this too, and I know we've said this at the last meeting too, we voted to allow marijuana to be grown in Hatfield. And then we also voted on the bylaws, which did say where they would be allowed to be, have growing in, and like you're saying, a lot of people don't realize what we're voting on at town meeting and that's true, probably true, but it is something that we voted on in multiple ways and multiple avenues and amended at our last year's town meeting as well, or two years ago.
Two years ago.
So, yeah.
Yeah, there, I mean, there's been numerous opportunities for people both to, when the state first put the marijuana question up to the voters, to us, then approving and considering our bylaws initially and then amending them to reflect the concerns that were raised by folks, particularly with regard to the Prospect Depot Road project. And, you know, it's, you know, the aesthetics of this, and if it comes down to the fence, I mean, if marijuana didn't smell at all, but it still had to have a fence around it, it sounds like Mr. Van Gill would still be opposed to this project because he's concerned about a fence and what that impact that has on a community, a farming community. I worked for a long time in my professional career saving farmland around the country, both with conservation easements and with policies and programs to promote farmland protection initiatives. It's what I dedicated my life to. You know, rural residential development can happen anywhere in a community that has a rural residential zone. And so there could be a lot of houses out there. And there's an old saying in the farmland protection world, development is the land's last crop. And there are no choices after that. So if this land sits, perhaps in this case, in marijuana grow, as I pointed out at the last meeting, we're talking about three and a half acres, that wouldn't even qualify for 61A property tax benefit under the... for 61A property tax benefit under the ag laws and it wouldn't even qualify for the APR ag preservation restriction program because it's too small. We're not talking about a huge operation here.
Is there any more questions from the board to the applicant or, because once we close the hearing, we will, there's no more talk back and forth with the applicant, it's just discussion amongst us as board members. Any other questions for the applicant?
I'm good. I move to close the hearing.
A second.
Any discussion? Hold on, favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing has been closed. All right, so now it's time for the board to be deliberating based on all of, everything that we've heard tonight, based on the last meeting and this meeting.
Well, I, I think it's clear that, you know, odor is gonna, is an issue, there's no doubt about that. And there, to the extent that, you know, we can't control the direction of the wind, we really don't have a whole lot of control over any more than, you know, when, you know, the plants mature and perhaps smell more than they do at other times, any more than we can control when manure needs to be spread or when it, when it's not spread or, you know, when potatoes may be rotting in a field or whatever, that's just sort of the nature of the beast in an agricultural environment. We can control the, I think, the visibility of this and as we discussed earlier, I mean, the sighting of this particular property, except for that easterly fence align is, I mean, you'd have to be driving pretty slow on North Headfield Road to see across 1,500 feet through some trees to really notice the fence any more than maybe you notice the fence by the solar array on North Headfield Road or the fence that is around CNS. So I would like to see us condition the permit to put in some kind of natural planted landscape screening on that east side.
Supplemental to the fence.
Supplemental to the fence, with the fence having the privacy screening of, you know, a natural color. We talked about forest green in the past, both with the solar fencing and I think with this would make sense. So I'd like to see us, if we are to move on this project, to condition it at a minimum to include that.
Yeah, and if the commissioning, decommissioning bond...
Well, that was...
That by the Cannabis Control Commission covers the fence removing.
That, that's something that preemptively took us out of that discussion.
I guess, I guess I have a question. If we, I mean, should we move forward on this project? Is there a way that we could have it be in place for, say, an entire grow season? A, a time for this small, seemingly small operation? Admittedly, they want to be a larger operation, but does it make sense to allow this small operation? And I have been all over this property and it's, it's up in the corner and it's, it's relatively innocuous. Doesn't it make sense that we, if we allow this to happen, that we allow it to go through an entire cycle of a grow season and then should, and not allow any permits beyond that point until such time as we have kind of a trial era, trial period on this? This is, this is a benchmark thing. I mean, this is, I think this is important because this is the first time something is going in a rural residential area and it seems to be checking all the boxes. And I mean, I tried to find a way to say no to this. I did, I did.
I think it would be hard...
I really tried to find a way to say no to this. The bylaws are such that they have dotted all their i's, they've crossed all their t's and I have heard your comments, your concerns on this and I, and I understand them and they aren't unwarranted.
I think it would be hard for the business to be able to operate knowing that they, I mean, they may be out of business in a year for, for reasons totally unrelated to anything that we have any jurisdiction over.
And then, yeah, and another piece of, if there are a lot of issues and flags from, from the zoning enforcement officer, there could be a point where we would ask them to come back before the board to renegotiate the permit, which we have done with other applicants in the past.
Yeah, we had to do that with Black Birch Vineyard, actually. But, but I think to your point, though, it's, it's a good one in that this as a test, if you will, we're only deciding about this...
Tiny one piece.
This piece.
Yeah, well, I mean, give them enough rope, for lack of a better term.
So if, if any, if, you know, any desire to do anything beyond this is gonna be colored a lot by how this operation...
And scrutinized.
And scrutinized by how this one goes.
And I think also that the new master plan is probably gonna take, what, two years to develop? So in that two-year time, we will have one year of experience with this project and we'll know how to place restrictions and availability in the master plan by experience, by saying, "It didn't work, so we're not gonna allow it."
That's my thought.
"It did work and we're gonna allow it only in certain places." But I think your idea of a one-year test is the best thing I've heard yet about this whole project.
But how can you put, I don't know how...
One season, a one-season test.
Are we, as a board, allowed to put, put those kind of...
I don't think we can do that. It's like telling a, a convenience store out on Route 5 that you can invest a lot of money in a convenience store for one year.
Right, no, I'm just talking about for future projects, not about this project.
Oh.
So, so we're not telling them that it didn't work, well, you gotta get out of here. We're telling them, "This one didn't work well, so we're not giving you more."
The concerns, the concerns have reared their ugly heads, so we weren't, we aren't going any further.
I don't think we can predicate our, our decision on this permit with that in mind, but it certainly will have an influence on how we consider any future application.
That was my point, not, not as an official predication.
Right, and if the levers of, you know, the, the levers of the zoning enforcement and the levers of people being able to complain if there are legitimate concerns and complaints, too, I don't think it would, then that would be something that would come back before the board if all of that is working well. So I feel that limiting it in the permit probably wouldn't be, like, it also probably would hurt, it would hurt any business, whether it was this business or someone else, by limiting their, a permit for a year, if that makes sense. Because if everything, if our system all, is working, they, they would come back before us if there are issues and we would, we would address them.
Right. I, I think we, yeah, just as we had with Black Birch Vineyard is a good example.
Same neighborhood, too. It's interesting, I find it interesting, again, I find it interesting because of Black Birch that we haven't heard anything from Black Birch about potential complaints about this project when they're pretty darn close to it.
I spoke to Ian about it.
Yeah?
And he was like, "I don't love the plan, but it's not, out of all the alternatives," was kind of his thought, this is what he said.
Mm-hmm.
And the fence was the other thing to, you know, if he's gonna see the fence.
Well, and he won't see the fence because...
And it, from the vines, well, the vines are gonna look at the fence, not the people that are, that are visiting there.
I think part of the issue here, for me, anyway, as we talk about violations or concerns or people complaining, is that we've got, you know, whether it's someone not liking the smell or a noise, someone not liking hearing music coming from Black Birch Vineyard, we have, I think, a need in this town to address teeth in enforcement. I mean, we have a, we have an operation going on on Elm Street that basically I know is driving two people out of their homes and we just have not been effective at being able to stop that individual's behavior because 300 hours a day is not enough of a deterrent.
Which I don't think has ever been used.
Right. So that's another issue for us and you as residents to bring up with the select board and address because we're not the cops and, and we've had any number of situations where, you know, people have been in violation of their permits and, and action is taken, but that action is somewhat ignored because it's...
No teeth.
There's not much in the way of teeth.
CNS has been ignored for the past 25 years and all their violations. Nothing's been done.
I would hope that in addition to any effort that people might have about before a master plan project is completed about adjusting our marijuana bylaws, they think also about addressing with the select board and other boards in town just how we put teeth into enforcement, regardless of what it is, whether it's smell, vehicles parked on a property that shouldn't be there or, in this case...
Noise.
Clearly flaunting the times and days during which an operation can occur.
All right.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yeah, is there any more discussion on this?
I don't know.
No?
I think, I think we're ready for a motion.
Well, I'll, I'll throw one out there if it needs to be amended, but I make a motion that we approve the project as, as proposed and the scale in which it's proposed with the additional condition that a vegetative screening be placed along the easterly boundary of the fence line, where the parking area is and along that Easter, the easterly fence line along Straits Road.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, hold on, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, then the project is approved with those conditions. We'll sign everything and it'll be ready, I'll be, I'm gonna hope to sign tomorrow, I think, so that'll be ready.
And I'd like everybody out there to know, we have approved one small project in the least challenging place of this property and we did that because every point the applicant put forward fit into the Cannabis Control Commission's requirements and our bylaws and previously we were told by our lawyer on the Depot Road site that if we didn't do, allow this to play out, not necessarily approve that permit, but allow the process to play out, that we would be sued by the applicant.
They are in violation of the bylaw.
The, the public hearing is closed.
So we, we are approving, we are approving one little piece of this.
Gerard, please.
Cannot approve it. You cannot approve it. Your violation of your own bylaws.
We're sorry.
Please. There is a, there is a 20-day appeal period and so if anyone wishes to appeal the project, it's not, the, the special permit is not...
Excuse me!
Active until 20 days out.
Who is speaking? I don't know who's, who's speaking, but, yes. And, yeah, we're...
Excuse me!
Who is the, I'm sorry, this...
Enforced.
This...
Before the order.
I think that might be Mike, but I don't know.
Excuse me!
I think that's Mike. Is that Mike?
Is that Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Mike.
Oh.
Hey, it doesn't say that that's your name, so, hey, Mike, our fifth board member.
I got muted before I could vote.
Well, were you here?
While you guys were voting.
Was he here for the...
Were you here for the whole hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, we didn't know you were here.
Well, I'm here and somebody muted me just before you guys voted.
Okay, so, you should ask what he wanted, what he wants to...
Yeah, how do we wanna redo?
Well, how was he gonna vote?
Yeah, Mike, how are you gonna vote? Do we redo it?
Against this project.
Okay.
And I have a lot of reasons, but I can't, I can't talk now, so...
Yeah, Mike, it's, I'm sorry, but it looks like you're not, it's not your name that's here. We did not know you were here.
And, well, we can, we can hold the vote again, so it'd be four to one.
We should probably vote again, then, due to procedural technological difficulties.
No, I guess we're gonna have to work on this system.
We're gonna...
If people can't make it in, in person.
Mike, we're gonna vote again. We're gonna make, we're gonna make the motion and have it open for discussion and then you can make your point and then we can vote.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we, that we need to vote again because we weren't aware that Mike was on the call and, and in a position and wanting to vote, so we thought he was...
I'll second that.
You sure we can do that?
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, are we sure we can do that?
Well, I mean...
Are you sure we can do that?
Well, you would have, it sounds like you would have voted nay and it still would have passed four to one, but again, this is, I mean, this is our new reality, right? I mean, we, we weren't aware that you were on the call and, and that you were in a position to wanna vote on this.
Yeah, I don't think you can, I don't think you can change it now, Bob, I think it's done. I, I'm not gonna cast a vote because I think it's done.
Okay.
I think I missed it.
All right.
Then I rescind my second and you will rescind your motion?
Or we just vote not to take up the motion?
No, I think we're, we're all, I'll just rescind that motion.
Yep. Sorry, Mike. With that, we will move on to the other piece of our agenda tonight, which is our vote to reorganize. We have just had elections, we have Mr. Bell here now on the board and we are voting now, or considering voting, on a chair or alternate chair. But we'll wait till people leave for a minute. People are clearing out.
Let's clear out.
Mike, I'm really, I personally am really sorry, we, I didn't know you were on the call. We, we did the roll this morning.
I don't think any of us knew.
Yeah.
Yeah, it didn't appear you were on when we started, but I don't know what time you showed up, but...
Yeah, well, we're gonna have to research how to do this, I guess.
Hasn't now July 15th...
Huh?
Hasn't now July, July 15th is the last day that you legally can have a member present?
Virtually.
Virtually.
Did you hear that, Mike? Gerard said as of July 11th, it's the...
15.
Or July 15th is the, is the state's law that you can't, you have to be in person. Okay.
Chris, one minute before you leave?
Yep.
No, here, thank you for coming with all the answers to the questions that we asked you to bring last month. That's personally me saying thank you for coming prepared with all the answers that we asked for.
Yeah.
We strive for thoroughness. You've seen that from me before.
And I feel bad that the, the public didn't feel like they were being considered, but it's the nature of...
For my part, I honestly went out trying to kill this thing. I did and I couldn't do it. They, they did everything they needed to do.
Right, and that's what's, just because we don't like something doesn't mean we can vote no on it.
Right, right. So you guys have done a great job.
Appreciate it.
So back to, well, I just feel really badly, Mike, I didn't know, we didn't know you were on the, on the, on the call. We thought you weren't able to make it, so...
Says your name is Ellen.
Right, his wife.
Yeah, his wife, but, right.
Ellen Bocina, EB.
I think in the end, though, we, we needed to have, any special permit requires a vote of four.
Right.
And so we had a vote of four. If Mike had been able to be on the call and, or we knew Mike was on the call, you would have voted, but you would have voted against it, which would be four to one.
Right.
So I, I think it's, unfortunately, Mike's vote is not registered in the minutes and won't be registered in the minutes, but in the end, it's, it's, the outcome is the same.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, okay, all right, and...
Is that still going on behind you with the wood people?
Oh, it happened, it was all over Memorial Day because Steph and I were getting emails from neighbors.
Oh, jeez, really?
Oh, it was terrible.
Fill me in.
There have been complaints on and off about the Lashco operation there behind, like the storage units there on Elm Street.
Where the Hatfield Barn used to be, yeah.
Yeah, near, next to that or whatever, yeah. That's, there have been complaints on and off about him operating outside of the hours that are on the permit, which basically says like half day on Saturday, none on Sunday.
And I believe it says no holidays.
And he was revving up the really, apparently it's a very loud wood splitter and machine.
And then chipper.
Chipper.
He's got a whole tree chipper in there.
Right.
Yeah.
And you can hear it all over town.
And it's, so it, I guess at eight o'clock on Memorial Day morning, he was fired, fired it up and
Yes, that's correct. Memorial Day.
Yep.
Yes, all day long.
Steph and I got emails and we got in touch with Kyle. I don't know what impact. Kyle said he was gonna go over and address it. I presumably he did, but I don't know what impact that had. That's sort of what I was getting at when we were talking about our need for more teeth in our enforcement. The other
Well, that's kind of to my question on the, on the whole thing up there in North Hatfield. I mean, you know, nobody's done anything about that, that
Well, someone has to complain about it and then it depends, you know, talking anecdotally like to your buddy saying they're out of, there's not anyone proactively enforcing. It's more of, you have to bring the complaint to the zoning enforcement officer. And then ideally, you know, they're doing some proactive enforcement too, but for the most part, it's people bringing the complaints to the zoning enforcement officer and the zoning enforcement officer deciding what is a valid complaint or not.
Yeah, well, I mean, I spoke to Bernie and he, and he, they were aware of it and the, the plan calls for greenhouses along the front, which will occlude that whole thing. So that's kind of why I was, you know.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, what's
Invite them in or invite the landlord in to discuss this again and review the permit with them. And we haven't, I guess we haven't been able to fit that in on the agenda because of all these projects.
Yeah, and Mike, I actually had their lawyer reach out to me a couple of months ago, maybe like three or four months ago now, asking whether the business that he was conducting back there would fall under the agricultural exemption because forestry, pieces of forestry businesses are, do fall underneath that, but he's not like farming that property of trees or things like that. And so because the, the permit holder does have, is looking at, trying to figure out a way to amend it, well, he isn't trying to figure out a way to amend it, but he was wondering about the agricultural restrictions, exemptions, or I suggested if he really wants to change it to come in and, just like Black Birch did, and come before the board and to update, to ask for, to update their permit, that would trigger a special hearing, which would then trigger notices to all the butters and so we could really hear what, you know, is going on in the neighborhood. And we haven't heard back on that, so.
Yeah, so the attorney called me as the chair of the ag commission to get my opinion. He didn't know I was on the planning board. And I, in talking through it with him, he agreed by the end of the conversation that this did not qualify under the ag exemption as forestry because it's cultivating and, and processing your trees that you have grown.
Right.
And he does not grow any of these trees. They're just neighbor, they're trees cut down from someone's yard and then they are brought here to split. And even in the course of the conversation with me, the attorney, again, not knowing I was on the planning board, said, well, yeah, I guess the only other option then would be to see if we can get the special permit amended, but given how much he has annoyed the neighbors, that probably isn't a good idea. So I think we need, we need to address this a different way. We need to address this through enforcement because the other thing that's clear to me is, and I was the board chair at the time, so I remember this project quite well, and it's in the minutes because Gerard got them for us or for me to look at again from our records. He had very specific testimony about not only how loud the machinery was that he was gonna use and that it was quiet, described as quiet, but also how much wood he was gonna be doing over the course of the year. And I don't know how he possibly is even close to being under that cap that he had suggested that he would be doing, which is what we based our decision.
Right, he's got mountains back there.
Yeah.
Mountains.
It's significantly more than was represented during the hearing, both the noise level as well as the volume level, both of which we used in our decision-making to grant the special permit.
Right.
And some of the conflict I see a little bit, kind of Bob, what you were mentioning about contact, you know, thinking about enforcement going forward is, is that the zoning enforcement officer doesn't report to us, which, the way it's set up, it reports to select board and the select board may not be the most concerned about zoning, they're concerned about tax dollars, right? So they, they may err on the side of being a little more business friendly even if it might not line up necessarily very well with the permit. So that's kind of what I've been seeing a little bit of as well. So that's just something, another piece at play here with some of the enforcement issue.
So is there any
I would have a question. The, you wanna talk about tax dollars? They have lumber stacked up back there practically to the heavens and all that lumber has value and why is the Board of Assessors not assessing the value on that? Cordwood or whatever they're doing with it and send out a tax bill for that?
So they have also brought in a sawmill, a mobile sawmill there that I saw them running on a Sunday a long time ago.
Well, we did not approve milling of wood.
I know we didn't approve that.
We did, yeah.
They brought in a mobile
I can't handle that.
Mobile sawmill and they're doing stack lumber out of the trees that they're not cutting for firewood.
Yeah, there are clearly issues.
Yeah.
So my question is
What do we do?
Is there a way that the town could have an enforcement officer not be the building inspector, just an enforcement officer, even if it's part-time, so that, that they would be responsible to the town, to the select board and to us to, to adjudicate our permits?
I think that is something that, again, again, we'd have to change all their bylaws with that, so that would be a town meeting thing. That also, I think, would fit better with the master plan committee.
That's what I was just gonna say.
And really looking at what other towns are doing and learning from them because each town is set up differently. I was talking to the Deerfield Planning Board Chair and she said they're having an issue with enforcement too because their bylaws don't even really state who actually is the enforcer. So they don't, they are like in even worse shape than we are with some of this enforcement stuff. So there's, there's a lot I think we need to think about more holistically with the master plan.
Yeah, I agree. And I think this would be a good reason to jump into it in the master plan because of issues like this where there's something going on in a neighborhood. Isn't that like stuck out in, you know, in East Nowhere? This is going on right in the center of town and these people are clearly slapping their, slapping their nose at us.
Right. Relatedly to other complaints, if we wanna bring you up to speed, over the last month, we received a letter from Mr. Woodside, who was the one who, the neighbor to the Thayers and they're excavating when they purchased the property next door to them, which was Tatro's parcel. The neighbors reached out with a letter, their attorney reached out to us and to Kyle with a letter saying, explaining how they don't think that the Thayers have lived up to the pieces in the permit related to screening and things like that.
How interesting.
So Kyle, you know, again, I was replied, gave it a couple weeks, asked Kyle like, hey, what's, like, this is your purview, not, not ours. What you, what you doing? And he said that he's talked, he's going to talk to the Thayers and then Gerard pulled the conservation commission approval of the berm or whatever that, that was also a part of, of the permit. So Kyle's like, I think, speaking to the Thayers about that, but again, I don't.
Can I, can I get any pertinent stuff on that too?
Yeah.
I just talked to Wally this morning, so maybe just square this up without all that.
It's, I
Kyle's drafting a letter to Tom Woodside. He's gathered all the information he needed and he's gonna, he's sending a response to Tom Woodside as we speak.
Okay, yeah.
Tom lives like right across the street from the Thayers.
And
So he's at, he's at what, Motika's place or in the
Up above.
His little houses that are
Yeah, it's in the back there, yeah, okay.
Unfortunately for Tom, I think he picked on the wrong person.
Yeah.
But we have another, yeah, I mean, there's other issues in town, you know, there's, you know, there's some wildcat trucking operations going on in town that, you know, and
Couple of them.
And if neighbors don't complain, then it's, then the tree hasn't fallen.
Right.
You know?
Right.
We might be aware of them, but if we're, you know, it's, it's a, it's a funny situation we find ourselves in and I think it is one that we need to address.
Right.
Yeah, and it makes, yeah, it's like, what's the point of us enforcing these permits for some people when other people don't come and even, even come in and attempt to get them?
How far do you go looking for a fight too?
Exactly, it's, it's that, and I understand that's the zoning enforcement officers, you know, somewhat dilemma or thought, you know, a balance of that too. So again, if nobody's, it's, yeah, it's something we have to, I think, address with the master plan if we do, but with that, any other informal discussion here?
So I have on the vote to reorganize and, and I don't know why it is that we need to do this every year. I guess it's just because it's the beginning of the fiscal year.
Right, and new people could be on board and
Right. And, and we have lost Paul, so we do need a new member for the community preservation committee and it can't be me because I'm already on it and as a chair. So we do need another member for that. But given that we're moving into the master plan process, and Steph, you're our member on the master planning process, right? I would suggest, we had envisioned the idea that Jimmy would be co-chair or alternate chair during this period of time and it's sort of like, you know, like on a board, the alternate chair then becomes the chair, so it's an, it's like a, it's like a
Sequential thing.
Yeah, it's like a, you know, a prince in waiting kind of thing and then you just move up in, in the hierarchy when that person moves out. And so the thought was that Jimmy would then move into the chair position and I'm not sure we had really decided that it would be the next time we reorganized, but I'm wondering if we might, going into the master planning process, sort of stick where we are now.
I'm good with that.
The other thing to think about is I don't really think the master plan committee's really gonna get off the ground until at least the end of the year just due to the funding piece of it. So it probably really won't get up and running, I would say, till end of the year, beginning of next year.
Right.
Just thinking about that process.
So I was just wondering if you would be willing to serve as chair for another year as going into the master plan, so there's some continuity there and then Jimmy stay as alternate chair.
I'm good with that.
Mike is our Pioneer Valley Planning Commission representative. Mike, does that involve a whole lot?
I actually was the, that person last year and
Oh, you were, oh.
And I emailed them being like, what do I need to do to get on? And there was like crickets and I didn't hear like anything. So I don't know if they were just quiet because it was still COVID, but also
Yeah, because I know in the past, they would have like an annual meeting and then maybe there were things in between the annual meetings, but
But no, yeah, if Mike wants that, he could totally.
Mike, did that, what was it? Because you were probably doing it when it was not during COVID, so were they more active?
Yes, there was meetings, I don't know, every other month and then there was the annual meeting, it was a lot more active, yeah. But since COVID, everything's been locked down. I don't even know if they're open down there except for, you know, on the phone, so
We've heard they had some staffing issues too, so.
Yeah, Steph and I are working with them on this farmland thing and then the open space development bylaw and that is just going at a snail's pace.
Yeah, they wanted it to be done
Well, they were hoping they would have it ready for us
For town meeting this past year.
For our town meeting in May.
We're not even close.
Yeah.
But I'll, I could stay on as the rep if you want, if that's what you want.
Oh, another thing that's exciting that I should probably announce and probably have said earlier, but we got our funding for, I mean, did I say it last? No, it wasn't passed at the last meeting. We got our funding for a professional, well, our professional planner.
Awesome.
Yeah, a town meeting. We voted to allocate, I think it was $11,000 or around $11,000 to have
That'll give us a part-time
Part-time professional planning services, knowing that it might, you know, it might, we may, maybe we'll find someone, maybe we won't, but just the allocation of the money is the first step in trying to get more professional planning support. I don't know if you were paying attention to any of that stuff, but we, yeah.
And the hope was that maybe we team up with another town or two and pool our money to get somebody, like a circuit rider.
Cool.
And just part of the reasoning around that is like to maybe decrease potential liability because all of us, you know, we're not planners. Also might increase an applicant's experience with the town if like they helped them be like, oh, this parcel might not be a good parcel for what you're trying to do, but this one is. We do a little bit of that as the chair, but like having someone who's dedicated to doing that work and gets paid to do that work.
And who has some engineering and conservation commission experience, they could be working with an applicant like Chris Chamberlain up front and say, you need more, you know, you need more information here in detail on this.
Streamline the process.
I was a little surprised that they were, somebody was questioning Chris Chamberlain's qualifications.
Yeah, but also like
It's an emotional topic, so, I mean, it is what it is.
And it would, it would eliminate the appearance of any sort of, like, we would actually maybe have this person look up the information on property values and, and crime so that the reporting, the report itself isn't coming from the applicant, but like we would have our own person on staff that would maybe do a little bit of that work. So I'm excited that we finally, we've been requesting, asking that for the last three years and this, this year, we, we got, we got the funds for it.
It's awesome.
Because now we have the funds, we can go out and
Yeah, I can find some, now we should try to go find somebody.
And I talked to Marlene, she's like, oh, I have ideas, this person could be in this office and she's like, she's on board with it and, which is exciting too. So it's just a first step and hopefully something that will also support the master planning.
Congratulations.
Thank you for putting the seed there, Bob, like three years ago. The wheels of government move slowly, no, we got it.
Move forward.
Move forward. So, sorry, I just got distracted with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and them not, because they're technically are supposed to be our support with some of these projects, but they're clearly a little overburdened right now and having someone that is dedicated specifically to Hatfield would be exciting.
Well
So back to the voting to organize.
Yeah, so David, are you, would you be willing to be on the, you're the only person who doesn't have an office, so to speak, on, on
Oh, is that why you were eyeballing me?
Yeah, to be on the CPA rep from the planning board.
What's that commitment look like, Bob?
Yeah, so the commitment is from November to April, it's once a month. There might be a meeting in, a month in there in January where we meet twice.
Okay.
And then we're done.
Is it, is it typically a given?
It's a Wednesday night, it's the last Wednesday of the month and so the applications are due November 1st and so we, oftentimes that November meeting is, might be in the middle of the month because of Thanksgiving and then we meet the end of December and then the end of January, end of February. Like I said, there might be two meetings in January depending upon how many applications there are. We have a public hearing in March and then we're done. We usually meet the last Wednesday in April because it's right before town meeting and that's really just to wrap things up in preparation for town meeting and that's our last meeting of the year.
Okay.
And it's exciting, you get to award money.
Yeah, you get to award money.
It sounds like fun.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
So, well, I would make a motion that the board officers So, well, I would make a motion that the board officers for the upcoming fiscal year be Steph as chair, Jimmy as alternate chair, David as CPA rep, Michael as PVC, PVPC rep.
I second that.
Any other discussion?
I'll second it.
Oh, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Those, reorganization is reorganized.
Great.
We are reorganized.
Minutes.
Minutes approval is the last piece on the agenda.
And that's from April?
Yeah, these are April's minutes, not. Looks good to me. Any?
Good to me.
Motion to?
I make a motion, we accept the meeting, the meetings, the meetings. The minutes of the April 28th meeting.
And so just Steph, Jimmy, and I can vote on this. I second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, minutes from April 28th, 2022 approved. Next scheduled meeting, we generally do not have a meeting in July, because it's usually the week of July 4th, and so our next meeting would then be August 3rd, so everyone enjoy their summer off, their month off.
Do we have, do we know if, so we, we know that there is no one interested in coming before us for July? There's nothing out there, Gerard?
There's plenty on the radar, there's just nothing formal, no one has a board.
Okay.
Yeah, there's like still that hotel proposal on five and 10. There's, is the solar person, the solar still working or not working?
I haven't heard anything from Ross Park.
How about Herbert or Hebert or whatever his name is on Plain Road?
He's talking with Conservation Arena.
Okay.
So maybe that would come.
There's nothing, he hasn't presented anything to the planning board.
Your idea that you brought up when we were at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission meeting of approaching the hotel people about the TDR.
I have his phone number, I need to call him.
About what?
So we have a transfer development rights bylaw, which.
What that means, because it's kind of big even in the bylaws.
Which, it's actually a farmland, well, started out as a historic preservation initiative to save Grand Central Station is where TDR came from.
Oh.
So basically, those guys had air rights, right? They had rights above it, and they wanted to tear down Grand Central Station. And so they created a program by which they could sell what otherwise would be the root, the floors that they could build if they did tear down Grand Central Station to other people who could add floors onto their buildings in, above what would otherwise be allowed in those zones.
Oh, wow.
And so the idea would be that you could build more homes on the parcel that you own by buying easements on farmland somewhere else in town. And so when we passed our bylaw, we actually, this was part of the last master planning process. We designed it in such a way that it was not pegged to residential development, but rather to commercial and industrial development, allowing for greater lot coverage or more stories.
You only allow two-story hotels, for example.
Right.
And so if this potential applicant was interested in, maybe, maybe it's economically not feasible, like not a great idea to have a two-story hotel, for example, but if you could have a three-story or a four-story hotel, you could then put that money, what Hadley does, I don't know if we would be doing the same thing, put that money in a fund.
That's exactly what ours is set up to do.
And then we would use that money to then purchase land or easements on land to permanently protect it.
Right, so like, for example, if.
And that's basically why Hadley has, 50% of its land is preserved, and a lot of that is due to the development on Route 9.
Right, so they are transferring, they are giving, giving developers on Route 9.
Free rate.
Bonuses.
Oh, bonuses.
Yeah.
In return for putting money into a fund that they use to preserve easements on farmland.
Well.
Because the state requires, when a farmer applies to sell their easements on farmland to the state, the state requires that the town contribute to some of that purchase. And so they use that money for their contribution. So in our case, if this hotel wanted a third floor, they would put money into our conservation fund, if you will, that we would then use to help protect land.
Is this where the hotel is now out there that they're gonna tear down?
The one that's, you know, the Hojos.
This is just an idea. So this is something that I wanna.
Interesting, so the idea is that just for, for that, that extra story of eyesight, you're getting, you're gaining conservation.
You're gaining conservation elsewhere in town.
And same with like lots coverage, it's like, it can show up in different ways. I think Hadley does it with like parking lots and like.
Parking lot spaces and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Hadley's is very successful.
And also, is it maybe because we don't have?
They have a big town with a lot of rural land.
Right.
As are we.
Right, and I think, I think have been a little more intentional at maybe not pushing, but like enlightening potential applicants about this process and program when we probably haven't been doing that.
We also don't have a Route 9 corridor running through our town.
We have Route 5 and 10.
Yeah, but it doesn't end up at a university.
That's true, that's true.
It doesn't end up in a town.
Right.
That has a supplemental population of 60,000 people.
I would say it's not apples to apples, it's apples to oranges, but they're both fruits.
Right.
You know what I mean? I don't know.
But, yeah, so anyway, we, the Food Bank was the first entity that came to us thinking about using this. The problem was, is that they were, they actually had somebody that was willing to donate an easement to them on some land that they owned, in return for the Food Bank getting greater lot coverage on that parcel. The problem was, is our bylaw wasn't written to allow for a donation of an easement, it was designed to have them actually pay into this fund. And it otherwise has not been used, because we really haven't had much in the way of like big industrial, commercial development. But when we were on this call the other day, Steph said, gee, I wonder about the hotel, maybe we can see if they're interested in another floor in return for participating in the TDR.
Touching it all up to speed.
But we haven't heard anything from those guys, have we?
No, I just got a phone number for the guy too, so I have to.
What is that, the Scottish Shan or something?
No, no, it's next, it's where the old Hojos was.
Oh, where Mulhern's used to be.
The Cairo, no, the.
And most recently, it was a doctor's office or something.
It was Mulhern's back, it was Mulhern's in like the seven.
Joe's house place.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Joe Mulhern's place.
Yeah, and where River Valley Co-op used to park their cars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's it, that site.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
All right, like I said, next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, August 3rd, unless something urgent comes up, but I don't think it would, it would be anything that would need to have a hearing or a meeting that's not regularly scheduled, so.
So I make a motion to adjourn?
A second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.